Good evening, I would like to call to order the January twenty second, twenty twenty four academic achievement meeting for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. I am Dr. Zupora Miller, Chair of this committee and the District Five representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with our Vice Chair for this committee, the committee members, the other visiting board members, the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff, the Board Office Staff, in that order.
Hi, good evening, I'm Pamela Boozer Struther, the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education member.
David Murray, Board Member, District One.
Good evening, everybody, Bernie Jackson, Board Member, District Six.
Hello, Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Kian McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Stephanie McLeod, High School Mathematics Supervisor.
Good evening, Michelle Dyson, Middle School Mathematics Supervisor.
Good evening, Janita Nelson Generec, Elementary Mathematics Supervisor.
Good evening, Latoya Tolber, Assistant Principal at Kettering Middle School.
Good evening, Felicia McMillan, Principal, North Forestville Elementary School.
And good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez, I'm Board Administrative Secretary.
And thank you, everybody, for being here, and I would be remiss if I didn't say Happy New Year and Happy Twenty Twenty Four. So Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zupora.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Lasalle Frecher. Mr. Murray.
Here.
We have a quorum present, so now can we move to adopt the agenda? May I have a motion to adopt the January twenty second, twenty twenty four meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the January twenty second, twenty twenty four meeting agenda for the Academic Achievement Committee.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The agenda has been adopted. May I have a motion to approve the December eleventh, twenty twenty three meeting minutes?
I move for approval of the December eleventh, twenty twenty three meeting minutes of the Academic Achievement Committee.
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the meeting minutes have been adopted. At this time, we have no registered public comments speakers, so we will move on to discussion item three point O. At this time, I will yield the floor to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, to present her team and to move forward with this meeting's agenda.
Thank you so much. Are you all hearing like a sound kickback? Or is that just mine? Okay, must be just mine. Okay. Well, good evening. We came at the beginning of the year for mathematics and we talked about what we wanted to do. And now we're at the place where we wanted to look at implementation. So at elementary, middle, and high school, they each shared priorities that they had in different areas. And so I'm excited, which is why you see we have both a principal and an assistant principal with us tonight, because it's what do we do in the field? This is where we think about how we can grow and thinking about tonight will help. At the end of the year, we'll have one session where we really talk about recommendations that this collective team thinks through. And so I turn over my fantastic math team to share their findings and what the work, what the work looks like in the field. So Dr. McDaniel, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. So again, yes, the team's going to share, give you some insights into the actual implementation and monitoring of the tutoring and interventions that we shared when we initially came to the group. And we'll be specifically looking at Dreambox Algebra One Lab and the MSDE Lesson Study this evening and those who are participating in those programs. So I'll turn it over to the math team. All right, I can share my screen and we can get started. Is that all right? Let me. Oops. Or maybe I won't. Do you see my screen?
Would you like me to share it?
Yes, please, because I'm having some technical difficulties. Thank you. All right, I think we can go to slide three. And then just to briefly, briefly recap some of the math tutoring and interventions we have in place already, we have the high dosage tutoring, small groups for grades one through twelve, and those are delivered by our external providers, Carnegie Learning and iReady Math. We also have evidence-based interventions being implemented in the schools. We have iReady Math, Dreambox Math, Carnegie Learning Mathia, and also Do the Math. And then we also have on-demand drop-in opportunities for grades three through twelve. So quick recap of what we have. And then we'll go into Dreambox. We can go to the next slide. So we talked about this in October. We have Dreambox Math for elementary grades K through five. This intervention or supplemental resources, how we're using it in Prince George's County, is the only digital math program that's rated high in ESSA, the ESSA rating of strong. And so for our curriculum guidance, we provide support for teachers to implement this during our Purposeful Pause Days, which is an opportunity for teachers to reengage students with standards that they struggled with during the school year when implementing the lessons and activities from the curriculum. We also offer it as learning stations. We provide guidance for using it during flexible small group instruction and also independent practice that can be done at home. When looking at our data, we can go to the next slide. This just shows the current progress. So eighty-nine percent of the district K through five students, they have taken the Launchpad Baseline Assessment, which places them in the Dreambox curriculum. And then if you see the line graph, the darker line shows the growth for students that are completing five or more lessons. As you can see, the students completing five or more lessons, they have shown seven tenths growth, which is almost one year's worth of growth within the Dreambox curriculum. When we look at all students, which includes students, oh, we can stay on that slide. At lighter gray, when we look at our, all of our students, including the students that are not meeting at five, five lessons per week, we still see growth at about four tenths, which is about half a year of growth within the Dreambox curriculum. And that last line just shows where we are in the district K to five. Sixty-five percent of our students are two or more grade levels below grade level within the Dreambox curriculum. Twenty-two percent are near grade level, which is a year or more closer to grade level. And then we have thirteen percent of our students that are at or above grade level in the Dreambox curriculum. We can go to the next slide. So successes, eighty-nine percent of our students, and I think that is actually more, because I think when I prepared this, it was in November, so I think it's more, but eighty-nine percent have completed the Launchpad Baseline Assessment, which again places the student at their current grade level within Dreambox. Students who've completed five or more lessons. I'm sorry, this should say students who've completed two or more lessons have shown quartet's grade levels of growth, which again is near half a year within the Dreambox curriculum. And I keep saying within the Dreambox curriculum, because I want to make sure that everyone is clear that this is just one data point. We have additional data points that includes our curriculum. Dreambox is a supplement to the curriculum, and the expectation isn't, this is all students do during instruction. Challenges we have is that within the curriculum, the Dreambox curriculum, sixty-five percent are performing below grade level. And we do need some additional professional learning for teachers to support teachers with how to use the data from Dreambox to support classroom instruction. Because again, this is a supplemental resource, not to take place of the curriculum or grade level content, just a supplement to support teachers with using that additional information to find out where students are performing, so that they can support access to grade level content. And I'll stop there and hand it over to the wonderful Dr. McMillian, McMillian, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I am humbled, I'm happy, I'm honored to share with you this evening. And I will be a doctor in four more classes, dissertation topic has been approved, but thank you, we're speaking those things in existence. It's been a long time coming. May I have an opportunity to share my screen, please? Can everyone hear me? I'm sorry. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay, great. May I have an opportunity to share my screen?
Yes, you can. Do you have a different one?
Um, I am just trying to share the presentation I put together for tonight.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Um, it's giving me a message about not being able to share. Okay. Okay. Okay, can everyone see now? Okay, I apologize for that. I am, again, very honored to have an opportunity to share this evening. And I just want to talk a little bit about our success here at North Forestville Elementary School with our implementation of Dreambox. We are, again, North Forestville Elementary School, where the Falcons Fly Higher. And our theme for this year is equity, access, and acceleration for all. And so we have definitely gone through an evolution of understanding that we are all math people. And I would be remiss if I didn't stop to thank Dr. White, because at every SLI and whenever you were presenting mathematics, the passion and the excitement that you exude about mathematics and how we as administrators can get this work done is greatly appreciated. And I also want to thank Janita also for her constant support with any and all things mathematics. And as she continued to remind us that we are all math people. And so one of the reasons why we have been successful with our implementation of Dreambox is due to our mathematics professional development. And I included two pictures where we have Mr. Ryan Richardson, he is our awesome Assistant Principal in his second year. And I have deemed him, knighted him, ordained him as our mathematics administrator. And he has taken it and run with it. And so I'm very excited about the work that we're doing with our entire staff as it pertains to mathematics. Also, we're very excited because back in December, we had our district's Dreambox Professional Development Specialist, Mrs. Anna Anwul, to come and provide Dreambox Professional Development to our staff. And at that time, we were really struggling with the teachers being able to assign lessons in Dreambox. It was one thing to have our sweethearts on the program, but we wanted to make sure we were using it to the best of its capability, so we were excited to have Mrs. Anna Anwuyu, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing her name, to come out to present to our staff. And so we're very excited to share that all students have completed the Launchpad Baseline Assessment. And as of December the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at that time, we were the only school to have completed the Launchpad Baseline with one hundred percent of our students completing it. So we were very, very excited to get that information from Mrs. Anna Anwuyu. Uh, we have school-wide schedule intervention time built into our master schedule, and that has been that way for four years. Have we always met with fidelity? We had not in years prior, but for the past two years, we have been really implementing intervention scheduled time, and we're very excited about that. Reminders to staff as per verbal announcements and in our NFES News Newsletter, that's a bi-weekly newsletter that I put out, and it simply reminds teachers the importance of our online interventions. And we share updates in our newsletter regarding such. Another thing that has helped us to be successful with Dreambox is our Intervention Usage Conference with teachers. And we have, for the past two years, have been holding conferences with teachers, and not only holding those conferences, but we have created agendas for each staff member so that we can monitor our meeting and follow up accordingly as it pertains to our interventions. We have intervention check-ins where our leadership team goes into classrooms during the scheduled intervention times to ensure that students are working in their online interventions. And I'd be, I'm happy to share this presentation, this presentation, excuse me, and all of the links with, with all of you as well. Some other successes, again, Dreambox being part of our daily schedule. I mentioned the part about our Assistant Principal, so I'll jump down to collaborative planning. We're very, very excited and I'll share the agendas with you as well, because we started implementing collaborative planning as early as August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And fortunately, every week, we have met with fidelity in collaborative planning, and I couldn't be happier with my, my, my school community for their dedication to making sure we implement collaborative planning. Definitely, we're promoting Dreambox with our parents via Class Dojo, and every time we have an opportunity to meet with our parents, we have our parent meetings, the first Thursday of every month, we're always talking about academics. And so our parents have definitely got on board and they're making sure that their sweethearts know that, yes, you can access Dreambox at home. Some of the parents were surprised when we told them back, in October was our first parent meeting, because September, we had back-to-school night, so we didn't want the parents coming out twice in September. But they were very surprised, because they said, oh, we, you can access that at, at home, yes, you can access it at home. Aligning our lessons and standards via Dreambox as per our It Takes Two program. So back in December, I started this program, It Takes Two, because in addition to the standards that our teachers are teaching per the curriculum, we noticed based on the data that we need to do a little bit more. And I'll be glad to share these documents with you as well. So it's one thing to know that you have to teach an additional standard, but being able to go into Dreambox and assign those lessons based on the standards, oh, it gives us so much bang for our buck. And so we're very excited about that. And then weekly meetings as instructional officers. So it's one thing to put all of these things in place, but then my instructional officers and I, we hold ourselves accountable to make sure we're monitoring our progress and we're providing appropriate feedback to help our teachers and our sweethearts grow. Now, we did have a couple of challenges, starting off, teachers monitoring the lessons the students complete, because they were, you know, having the students to get on, but we needed to improve with monitoring. And also the teachers needing that professional development to be able to assign the lessons in Dreambox. And again, as we sit today, we're excited to have done that, again, that occurred back in December. Also, just making sure we're teaching mathematics and we're teaching it with fidelity, we're teaching it based on the results we get from Dreambox, because that's, that's very, very important. And so everyone teaches, as you see, I'm here teaching a small group of sweethearts, we have teachers teaching, we have students teaching. And we're very excited about our progress. And then I just wanted to share this slide, as you can see, our growth with our sweethearts implementing, using Dreambox. You can clearly see from September to January how we have increased, and right now, we have eight tenths growth, which is pretty significant. And we're very excited to have at least twenty percent of our students who are at or above grade level with their implementation and understanding and improving their proficiency levels when it comes to Dreambox. So we're super excited about that. And the best is yet to come, even with our brand-new teachers, they, they understand the importance of mathematics. It's one of our brand-new teachers right here, she's excited, doing great things with mathematics as per our program, Dreambox. And I just want to thank you for an opportunity to share a little bit of our excitement and our growth as it pertains to implementing Dreambox. And again, I'll be glad to share this presentation and all of the links with all of you. Thank you.
Rosa, can you put the other presentation back up? And Felicia, can you just quickly cover your successes and challenges?
Yes, you want me to put the slide back up as well?
No, Rosa, Rosa will put her slide up.
Okay, absolutely. And so our successes.
Rosa, go back one slide.
So, I'm sorry, did you want me to start now?
Sure.
Okay. Successes include Dreambox being a part of our daily master schedule, so every day from eight o'clock to eight-twenty in the morning, everybody is stop everything and Dreambox. We do that every day. The appointment of my Assistant Principal as our mathematics administrator. Collaborative planning. And we started collaborative planning on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and we have been able to meet every week with fidelity. And so we're grateful for that success. Professional development with our district's Dreambox Professional Development Specialist, Mrs. Anna Anwuyu. And she came out and went over different tools in Dreambox, particularly teaching the teachers how to assign lessons based on the standards. Not just, you know, getting on Dreambox to complete Dreambox, because, you know, we had some sweethearts who were in third grade initially working on first-grade Dreambox, Dreambox lessons. So that professional development was very, very powerful to help our teachers grow in that area. Promoting Dreambox with our parents via Class Dojo, via our parent meetings, via every opportunity we get to share with our parents, we're talking about mathematics and Dreambox is definitely a part of that conversation, so that has been another success. Again, aligning lessons and standards in Dreambox per the data, so when we look at benchmark data and we see, when we look at teacher-created assessments and, and we see the deficiencies, we want to make sure that we're setting students up to practice and complete lessons that are based on their needs per, per Dreambox as well. And weekly meetings with my instructional officers, where we hold one another accountable to make sure we're monitoring and we're providing feedback. Those have been some of our successes. Another success as well, the individual intervention conferences that we have with all teachers. Teachers, paraprofessionals, specialists, we, we, we have sit-down twenty-minute conversations with everybody just to support with their implementation of Dreambox and to see if they need any additional assistance. And we have those agendas to refer back to when we need to provide additional assistance. So those were our successes with implementation of Dreambox.
All right, you, you covered your challenges?
The challenges, okay, oh, I'm sorry, the challenges, initially, the teachers and their monitoring of the students, because they would get on to work the program, but there, there was no monitoring. It was just something to do pretty much for compliance sake. So that initially was a challenge. But then when we had conversations with teachers about the importance of monitoring and the importance of assigning lessons based on the student's data, because that was a challenge as well, they did not know how to do that initially. But we have since overcome that challenge, and all of our teachers are comfortable, proficient, and they're making sure they are assigning lessons in Dreambox based on our students' data. So those were our challenges.
Thank you so much, Rosa, and you can go to the next slide.
Good evening, everyone. I want to apologize on behalf of Principal Pope Brown, she had to take her, she had a family emergency, so she's unable to be with us today. But I am going to share with you the pros and cons that she shared with me, that she wanted to speak to. As you know, Algebra One Lab is our high school course that we try to provide students with that need an intervention for Algebra One. It is the curriculum is provided by Carnegie Learning, it is Mathia. It is an online platform where students are able to work at their own skill level. In addition to that, it requires some whole group instruction, which will be, which would include learning centers and flexible grouping. And we have, I think we're in year three, if I'm not mistaken, perhaps year three of this being the core curriculum for the course. Principal Brown shared that some of the pros were the fact that it is interactive and adaptive to the students' abilities and that the work, students must master the workspaces before they are able to move on to the next workspace. Their students are provided hints with respect to, as they're going through problems, so if they don't understand the concept, they can click on a hint to assist them. It builds conceptual understanding, which helps students with a deeper understanding of the concept and allows students to have various approaches to problem solving. Teachers are provided with PowerPoints that they can use to support instruction and that the students, the student's progress is monitored constantly through the Mathia platform. Some of the cons or the challenges, so to speak, have to do with the reading level for some students, particularly maybe some SPED and ML students, that it makes an assumption that the student has totally mastered or assumes that the students have learned the prerequisite skills before the content, so that, that's a piece that we're working with our teachers on to solve, so that as they're looking at data, they can do some pre-assessing before moving students through. The students must answer questions in a specific format, and we tend to not want to lock students into answering a certain way, as long as they're able to provide answers, but that's one of the drawbacks of the online platform. And lastly, that some of the, the lab teacher felt that she found herself explaining the directions to problems, because the contents because the contents was, the content was tedious and challenging for SPED and ML students. But we're working with the company to work on some of those things. As a matter of fact, we just had a meeting, my team and I had a meeting with the team from Carnegie Learning last week to look at how we're looking at the data with respect to completion versus mastery. And to help teachers understand that when they are looking at that, so students may be progressing through, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they've mastered that and ways to go back and revisit that content and build the proficiency levels. And that will be the end of the report for high school.
Good afternoon. So we know that critical tools for improvement student achievement that we shared tonight around interventions and tutoring support. But we want, I want to take you a different route because we know that improving student achievement begins with what's happening day to day in our classrooms. So we entered this particular school year with, in a partnership with MSD around math lesson studies. And this partnership with MSD focused on two middle schools, Kettering Middle School and Benjamin Tasker Middle School, where the teachers, a group of teachers, administrators, the coach got together and they worked on identifying and researching, doing research around what are those best practices for improvement instruction based on their individual school data? So as you look here, just to recap what we talked about the last time, is in that lesson study cycle, it it is student-centered. It improves teacher effectiveness, it enhances teacher collaboration, and it is data-driven and research-based. And it takes the team through multiple stages. With this work, why we were so excited to enter into this particular partnership is because the focus in these phases line beautifully with our collaborative planning cycle and structure that we already have in place in the district. So the goal with this work is to start with these two middle schools and then eventually expand this lesson study protocol to additional schools next school year. So I have with me today, Mrs. Latoya Tobert, who is a part of this work at Kettering Middle School. She is the assistant principal and a very active participant in this work. And she's going to share with us some of what, what are some of the strengths, what's working, what's not working? Where we go next and what are some growths? What was the research theme they focused on and some additional things to share with the team? So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Tobert at this time, and you can go ahead and move to the next slide.
So as we look at the process, when Dr. Dyson first came to me, I was like, well, goodness, how is this going to work? How is this aligned with what we're already doing? And one of the things that our administrative team had talked about at the end of the school year, last school year was how do we incorporate some form of peer observation in our work? So that teachers have an opportunity to be able to see what's happening in other classrooms and then hopefully be able to grow their skill set to be able to benefit our students across the building. And so we didn't have though a structure for that. So when this was brought to us and once we had an opportunity to sit down with Maryland State Department of Education scene, it it just made total sense. And as Dr. Dyson also mentioned, we take collaborative planning very serious. So the cycle that has been shared by the district for many years now is something that was innate in our work that we do on a daily or weekly basis. So one of the things before I jump into this, looking at that diagram to the right, the stages of this work, that first part, the green part on stage zero, setting the norms. When they came into our building, we, they said that, you know, for the other districts in the state that they had been working with, they needed about a good hour and a half meeting to be able to meet with teachers for a period of time to be able to set up some things. But we already had much of what needed to be in place, already in place. So for instance, our collaborative planning happens at seven fifteen in the morning on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's early, first thing in the morning, but teachers are at their seats, ready to to work. Well, most of them all the time, but ready to work so that we can talk through what it is we need to do to support our students. And we even adjusted our master schedule such that our first period is our enrichment block. But math teachers do not go back to their classrooms at that time. They have an extended collaborative planning on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we have an hour and a half each of those days to be able to really sit and work through this process. So when we started, again, I also, everything that I was looking at with this work was how do we align this to the work that we're doing naturally in our building? So the school performance plan was something that was front of mind. And our focus with teachers around what is it that we notice is the challenge that exists and how do we move them forward? Last school year, the focus was around modeling. So this school year, we transitioned into reasoning and being able to build student capacity for that. But that also looked like, how do we help our teachers? So this question that you see here for the research theme, it says, how can we establish a learning environment that encourages students to feel secure and confident in their ability to reason through note-taking and student discourse? And then ultimately nurturing them into self-reliant, independent mathematical thinkers. So our problem of practice is specifically around how do we get students to reason? And we've been honing in on a strategy, Think Ink Pair Share, giving students an opportunity to think about the work that they're doing, write down what it is that they thought about, and then talk with their neighbor and then also share with the class based on teachers' monitoring and, you know, choosing wisely on who has information that would benefit everyone. One of the things that we noticed in our very first learning walk this year was, and the reason why we added that statement about self-reliant, independent mathematical thinkers is the teachers were doing all of the work. The teachers were the voice that we heard in classrooms consistently, even to the point of, after one of the learning walks, I had a teacher send me a text message to say, I just really felt like the students needed my voice at that time to be able to say such and such. And but as I sat next to students in the classroom, I heard them talking and they knew what they were doing. Yes, there was still growth that they needed in learning the material, but they knew what they were doing. So this work, we did as a collective group with all teachers, although our lesson study is specific, specifically with our seventh grade teachers, our seventh grade team. And then our instructional focus, as we thought about the standards that we would be covering at the time period that this lesson study would take place, the observation component, we were looking at multiplying and dividing integers. That's an area that students have been challenged with in various different ways. And especially when you're working through rational numbers, making it even more challenging. So we had to take a chance to figure out, okay, so what is it that is the real challenge? And the real issue is the teachers. The, they're working hard, but they were struggling. And I even have some feedback from some teachers of, one of my teachers said, my most important takeaway was curating thought-provoking questions for students that take them beyond procedural abilities and into conceptual understanding why this is the process. This requires me as the teacher to understand the why as well, which can be its own challenge. So the teachers even were confronted with the fact that, like, I know, I know how to multiply negative seven times negative four or multiply one-third times negative seven. But how do I make sure my students understand how to do this? What strategies would be of, excuse me, of best support to them? So in that, they came up with the idea as a team, the four, five teachers of let's look at the mathematical models that we're using. So let's look at how are they using a number line? How are they using some sort of tools like counters and different things to be able to understand? So that was how we worked into this process of the stages. Our prepare was the research that the teachers had to do. They had to read some articles, they had to go hunting to find information on what does this look like multiplying and dividing integers? And what support do students need? And then the stage two, the planning, they set together and worked through in multiple sessions, a lesson plan that they could all agree upon, creating various components of it, figuring out what does the exit ticket look like? I remember there was a point at which they created an exit ticket, but then they realized that, wait a minute, this exit ticket doesn't actually align to the activity that they're doing during the lesson. So this for me was beneficial because it helped me with something that I've been talking to them about around your, your evaluation at the end of the lesson needs to match what it is that you've covered in the lesson and your lesson goal. So all of these things. And then the teach and observe, we had one teacher who volunteered to be the one to teach the lesson. And then we had three teachers who were able to see the lesson take place. And we had class coverage for them so that their students would be covered, so that they could miss out on that time period and be able to be there to see how this lesson played out. We had a debrief immediately thereafter so that everyone could discuss what it is that we wanted them to, or what they took away from the work that we did. And then the reflect and refine stage is where we are currently, is really thinking through what is it that we did? What work needs to be done to take us to the next level? The next time, our instructional focus may adjust a bit because we're no longer in that particular content. But it's still an opportunity to think through, some of this was instructional strategies, not specific to that content. So figuring out how do we use various different strategies to be able to support students? So that we're not locking them into one pathway to be able to get to some sort of result. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the successes and challenges. I'll start with the challenges. One of the first things, the timeline of when we got started, because of just the nature of things, the idea was presented to us in the summertime, but of course, we don't have our teachers to be able to make this work happen in the summertime. So by the time we get into the building, get into pre-service and have limited time during pre-service to even introduce the basics of information, it wasn't until September that we were able to talk to the teachers about what it is that we were going to do. But we made it a very intentional point to continue to speak to them through the lens of our school performance plan as well as just the general use of the collaborative planning cycle. So that when we moved into this, it didn't feel as though we were trying to add something extra to their plate. One piece of feedback that I did get from one of my teachers was just around the fact that because of this partnership, it does come with some support for our teachers in the form of a monetary stipend. But the teacher even asked about what about the possibilities of some other sort of compensation? Not monetary, but maybe taking something off of my plate if I'm the one participating so that I can then give my attention to this work. So I appreciated that feedback from them. And then they also were open to even the thought of, if we're going to do this, maybe spending some time in the summertime, even if it's just for the part of planning for what is the research that needs to be looked at? So that we can do that before we get into teaching mode, grading papers mode, and all of those lesson planning mode things of that nature. So that they can use some of the time where they're a little bit more free to be able to grow in their work. Our successes, our math teachers have definitely bought into the process. I have a little bit of a heavy hand, but I think that they understand the why behind why. I'm very passionate about what it is that I do, and I want to help them to understand that, one, you're, you're awesome at what you do. But there's always room improvement for improvement for all of us. So we just want to figure out, as awesome as we are as a team, there's still not necessarily the data to show that our students are performing at the level that we would like them to perform. So that's something that we have to work through. We have completed the first cycle, so that is definitely a success. The only thing we don't have is our common assessment to be data, which is aligned to the standards that we were covering. They just took that common assessment last week, and then they'll be moving into benchmark two this coming week. So we'll have some data to be able to see how students performed on that standard that we were focused on. I've spoken to the alignment of the lesson study with our work already going on in our building. The conceptual knowledge of content has deepened, that is definitely a fact. One of the teachers also expressed how they really appreciated being able to hear from their peers about different strategies that are beneficial to students, that could help them through this work. And then that built their skill set so that they could use those skills in their classroom. So those who watched the lesson take place, they were not ones, the ones being observed. They were able to take that lesson back to their classroom and implement with their students. And then lastly, students were able to demonstrate success with at least two of the four strategies introduced during the teach and observe phase. So during this process of, I've mentioned mathematical models, they have four mathematical models that they were to have students use. And even when we were doing the observation, we noticed there were some students who really leaned towards specific models over others. So for instance, students really liked to use the color counters, the red and yellow counters, when they were working through the process. But they were forced through the activity to engage in all of the different ones. So we were able to also hear the discourse amongst students as maybe one who felt more comfortable with the strategy that was being done, they could then take over and be able to help their peers to be able to use that strategy. So that was much, very much helpful. And then lastly, one of our teachers here said, I found the peer-to-peer observation to be extremely useful. Participating in the creation and execution of a shared lesson plan has given me valuable insights into my approach to delivering the same lesson to my students.
Thank you for sharing, Dr. McDaniel. This concludes our portion of the presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm just really excited to hear what's happening in the field. So at this point, I will yield the floor to my colleagues to see if you have any questions of the team. And you can just signify that by raising of hands and we can just start with the first round. Dr. White? Knowing that we did all three, are you okay if we jump around? Or do you want us to do elementary, then middle, then high?
Oh, no, I, I don't want to, jumping around is perfectly fine. My team is able to bob and weave with you because I know you may just have questions that come to you as we go. You see, they, they, they went elementary, high, middle. So we're used to just being able to jump in and you see the work was different. So we're really intentional about what they feel is going to move their level of the work based on what comes at that age group? What comes with the type of teachers that are in the classrooms, you know, and where they felt like they wanted to move the work? So we, we welcome your questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, so team, you have any questions? Board member Pamela Booze-Strahler?
I thank you so much. Thank you all so much for the presentation and it's great to hear more about the MSD program and to, to see where that might lead to future programming across all the middle schools. My question tonight is, we're hearing a lot about teachers, how teachers are responding. And I guess I wanted to hear a little more if there was a broader report from teachers now that we just reached, you know, mid, mid-year on how, you know, how they feel that interventions this year are progressing, maybe from a more global perspective across the system? If there's broader data collected on that at this point?
I can speak to Dreambox specifically. And so it's varied. I have some teachers that are, yes, this is helpful. I'm addressing the standards that are most problematic at the elementary level. And then I have some teachers, because just of the nature of our work, feel overwhelmed. So they may not assign as many lessons as other schools. So when you look at the data, you'll see usage being, usage isn't the same across the district. So I think that's another challenge, is just supporting teachers with best practices on implementation effectively. And then also not just putting students on Dreambox without intention and without using that data to inform what the students be doing in Dreambox. So I think it, it just varies from school to school. And it has a lot to do with just the nature of our district. We have a lot of novice teachers, we have a lot of unclassically trained teachers, and then we have our veteran teachers that may prefer another intervention. So it varies, it just depends. Principal McMillan has structures in place in her building. And that also, it, it's, I can't give a global answer just because of the nature of implementation across the district.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, you know, I know it's, you know, from the experience of, you know, parenting and, and having an eighth grader. It's, you know, it's been varied from this, this perspective as well and talking with other parents. So I know we are all still, you know, working very hard, you know, in, in this area of mathematics around the disruptions that, that did happen. So I can appreciate that.
One of the things I think board member Booze-Strahler is that with my team, you know, they're constantly looking at different data points. They try to triangulate the data, I think Janita mentioned that earlier. And you can, you can tell that triangulation just by how their entry point is tonight. And so every year I've pressed them on, they look at the data, we see certain schools with United referring. So it's like, how do we get better? So we're constantly have this lens on them, like, so what do we do? So at one point in time, we, we had these interventions and it was like, oh, yeah, do them for homework. We realized like, we can't really control homework because they're at home and they also have other things for homework. So then I, I said, Janita, I want Dreambox as a part of the class, like, put it in the curriculum. Build a space and time that period, fifteen minute, there should be somebody that rotates through. But you see, even when Build a space and time that period fifteen minute, there should be somebody that rotates through, but you see, even when we do that. We can't control that everyone is still not on it. And that's because school, and you hear me come every month saying school happens, right? And so like she said, McMillan has processes and structures. It's easier there. She's an experienced principal. She understands that what she monitors gets done. Not to say the places where it's not, you don't, but it could be that places where you don't see it, it's something else. I may not be able to monitor my primary doing that because I have an upper grade teacher that needs all my time and attention. Or have special ed just falling apart over here, or I'm really focusing on here and you don't even realize like, wow, we don't win six weeks and I don't have the consistency. And so our lens, because we don't control that angle is constantly like, when we get data points, how do, how do we get better? So we're always trying to like sharpen that, but we still can have those inconsistencies. Doesn't mean that who's, who isn't using them. So then I have them look at who's using it true to fidelity. And Janita spoke to that. If you have a school that used it, if it says it should be five times a week and they're five times a week, did they grow? And when I can see that those kids grew, I know that it works if in fact we do it with fidelity of how it's implemented.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, board member Brandon Jackson.
Yes, sorry, I was struggling to get off mute. Um, I had a question. I had, I was following the. The Dreambox update and I, and I really appreciate the data. While I was looking at the slide, one of the questions I had was. I see that the. Students who have completed five or more lessons per week have averaged a point four grade level of growth. So I wanted to know like, what's the typical standard? So I, I don't, I know, I don't know what I'm referencing that point four to. And then also I wanted to know. About the sixty-five percent of the students are performing below grade level within the Dreambox math curriculum. And what is our, I guess, projection for the end of the year? Do we think we can, are we gonna track, what's our like point or our target to get to by the end of the school year with it now being sixty-five percent?
Thank you for those questions. I did have a typo on that one slide. It should say students who are on Dreambox have completed four tenths grade levels. The students that are doing five or more lessons, they've actually grown seven tenths. And so when we talk about that, that decimal, think of one as being a full year's worth of growth. So if we are at four tenths of a, of a point, that means, I don't wanna say four tenths of a year, but. Almost half a year's worth of growth. Does that answer your question regarding what that decimal number means?
Gotcha. Yeah, and so are, are we, are we tracking as expected with that, the four, the four tenths? So it's four tenths or it's seven tenths, would you?
So seven tenths for the students that are doing five.
Or more lessons per week.
Per week.
Gotcha, okay.
So this slide should just say students have come, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Gotcha.
When we look at the whole district and so we're on track, cause what we want to see. Is a year's worth of growth by the end of the year. So going to your second question. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarity.
Oh, okay.
Second question about the sixty-five percent piece.
So the sixty-five percent that are performing below grade level, two years or more is what they consider below grade level. Cause then we had that second data point of near grade level. I want every student to grow at least a year, but for those sixty-five percent. There's not an expectation that they'll be on grade level by the end of the year within Dreambox, but we do want to close that gap and ensure that. They are receiving the support that they need to not be two years behind, but maybe just a year behind. Within the Dreambox curriculum. And I'll keep saying within the Dreambox curriculum because it's just one data point. And so I don't want this to get conflated with benchmark exams, for example. Hope that answered your question.
Sorry, I was talking on mute. I'm sorry. So as we track. The sixty-five percent on grade level or, or not on grade level. Is there another measurement of how far they are like? So I know like, cause you could be, I guess, maybe three, three grade levels behind or you could be one grade level behind, but you're not on grade level. So is there also a metric that says, okay, even with respect to where they're supposed to be, let's say that you're supposed to be in the. A fifth grade reading level and you're on the third grade reading level, are we still tracking and say, okay, well, this kid. You know, moved from third grade to the fourth grade, even though that person still may not be there. And then like, so are we seeing like increases? You know, throughout the year from where they are, where they started, I guess. And is that the point seven to point four metric that you were talking about earlier?
Okay, so yes, we have growth reports, individual student growth reports. So we are looking at those reports and then schools as they are analyzing that data. It grouped students based on that, oops, that title went up. So yes, we can track the growth of individual students, including the students that are below grade level. And there's a report that shows at different points of time where they are within the curriculum.
Thank you.
Board member Jackson, was that? Can I move to the next board member or did you follow?
Yes, no, I'm fine. Thank you so much.
Okay. Board member Lesai Faison?
Hello, everybody. Everybody's well. My question has to do with the Algebra One Lab and I'm gonna first apologize for not being here on time. I was in another meeting for Prince George's County, so, but I am very interested in the Algebra One Labs. That are occurring at Friendly High School, since it's in my district. Interested in finding out in terms of. It says that it's a program specifically not a remedial course, but for students that are getting ready for Algebra One. So my first question is, how many of our students at Friendly are coming into ninth grade ready for Algebra One? And then the ones that are not ready for Algebra One are taking the Algebra One Lab. How long does it take for them to get, be ready for Algebra One? Does it take more than one year? So let's start with those two questions and I have two follow-up questions after that.
So I'm gonna let Stephanie speak. One thing I would say is every, every student that comes into high school right now goes into Algebra One. We, we're gonna have some adjustments to our math progressions at the high school level. What happens is when we look at middle school data, what should happen when we look at middle school data. We're looking to see students that will go into Algebra One, but may need additional support. And what you do is you back an Algebra One lab in addition to the Algebra One course. So they are taking those courses simultaneously.
So it's an algebra strategies class.
So basically, when you've heard us at the beginning of the year, we talked about it's an automatic intervention to some degree. Because we identify for some students, we're gonna work hand in hand. You're gonna get your full day of content. We're gonna back you right up to a lab, which is going to differentiate where you are in an intervention platform. But then it goes back to that fidelity there, goes back to the small group. She's built it out in small groups where there should be a teacher with small group of students. While she has another set of students in Mathia and another group of students and some, something else that she said. But it's, it's a companion course to Algebra One. I would say, and I'm gonna let Stephanie jump in, I don't know, she's having mute issues. But the other thing I would just say is one of the ways that we know we wanna definitely get stronger in that. Is being very intentional about who goes into that lab course. So we know that oftentimes I'm working on a student's schedule. I have extra ten kids, they don't have anywhere to go. Oh, let me drop them in a lab course and they don't even need to be in there, right? So the teacher's trying to bash apart who she's working with or who he's working with versus the intentionality that these students first must have a lab. Now, as Blueprint comes along and Blueprint talks about that we're going to have to have pathways. Pathways for students who meet and pathways for students who don't. There could be such budget implications where we say every single student that's not meeting with success must. Not we should be offering it, but it's not an option. It, it must be offered. And that could have budget implications, it could have staffing implications, because right now every school may or may not. The majority of them do, but we do have some locations that don't necessarily have lab in both our English ten and Algebra One. So as we move forward with this implementation of Blueprint, we're going to be working with the system to ensure that every single school has it. And that the intentionality about, around the right kid being placed in that course. Stephanie, I don't know if I did that justice for you in answering it, but.
You did. I just wanted to add two things currently at Friendly and I apologize again, cause. Principal Pope Brown from Friendly was supposed to join me today, but as I shared, she had a family emergency. They currently only have one class of lab at Friendly, which is about twenty-five students, give or take a few. And. As Dr. White was saying, those students were placed in lab based on the fact that they needed additional support. To master content going through the Algebra One course. It is not. So unlike. A grade level mastery, it is a content and standards mastery program. So as students are progressing through, have I mastered this standard? Am I proficient here? And am I ready to learn the next content? And we have it aligned so that it mirrors the units for Algebra One. What we need to do a better job at, and this is holistically, is making sure that when students are completing. That there is some level of mastery, that I'm not just not hurrying through it, that I'm getting through it and walking away. And being intentional on what I have sat down and learned. You know, some students on online program, they wanna hurry up and get through and maybe it not walking away with. Full level of conceptual understanding of the concept.
Is there, is there a teacher in there or an assistant with the student?
No, there's a teacher in the classroom. It is, so the Mathia is the curriculum for the classroom and it is teacher-led. So I assign to you the workspaces that you need. I monitor the workspaces that you're finishing. So we may all start at the same place, but I may be moving faster through the content than someone else. Based on my level of understanding and the support in small groups and the flexible, the flexible grouping and the one-to-one. Teacher to student intervention help happens in there. So it is like in-school tutoring.
Right.
We're not all working on the same thing at the same time. This is an opportunity to provide a student. With ways to get through Algebra One without having to go to an outside tutor because we're giving it to you in the building.
In the building, but a different class. So they're taking their Algebra One class and then they have that extra support in an additional class.
Correct.
Get to twenty-five students with a teacher.
Correct. And not every student needs that support. So as I say, for Friendly, they only have one class. But then we have some schools that have maybe three classes. But in this particular, you said Friendly was in your district, Friendly only has the one lab class. And I wanna say Ms. John is the teacher and it's like about twenty-five kids in the class.
Okay.
The thing I love about having this, this level of conversation where we talked about, you know, normally come, we just presenting. And this time we talk about the implementation, it's cause it's, it's not just recommendations for you, it's like recommendations for me, right? Cause as I'm listening to her and she's saying one class, I'm like. Well, I'm sure we got more than twenty-five students to, you know, who need that support. Or the fact that we know right now that we probably have some schools that don't have it. So the recommendations is, is, is a two-way, like this is a collaboration that collectively we're having on how do we, how do we take what we're really learning and seeing in the field? And how do we continually use that, that to get better?
Yeah, and then I'm looking at the challenges that you posted. Talks about how the teachers are being able to access the students to monitor the time that they're spending in this, on the stations. Can you talk to a little bit more about that?
So as we looked at the data from, from where I sit, I looked at the data. And I, I can say that for looking at Friendly's data, I noticed that there are a lot of students finishing. But when we looked at proficiency with respect to some of the standards, they were not as proficient as we would like to have seen them. As they're going through. So I'm doing a lot, but I may not be mastering a lot. Then I have another school where the students are moving through the content slower, but they're mastering more.
So I'm looking at formative assessments every unit and checking to see what the data shows us for the, each of the students? Or are we waiting?
Yeah, in, in lab, we're not assessing. In lab, it's tutoring. So the assessments come out of the program. So not a formal assessment per se, but there are some teacher assessment things that should be happening. And those are some things that we need to make sure that we look at and follow up on. Because what we're trying to do is give the students an authentic, an authentic tutoring environment. Where I'm not necessarily assessing you at tutoring in a formal way, but I'm assessing your level of understanding based on what you've done. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'm wondering if other schools are utilizing, I, I know in, in other school districts, when you use the Algebra One and the Algebra One Strategies Class. For example, in some of, in, in some other schools that I've seen. Even in the strategies class, you're doing formative assessments as you go. So they complete the online unit and then someone is doing a mini-assessment to see if they got it. And if they didn't get it, they go back and repeat it until they get that. And then when they are in the Algebra One class and the teacher does the assessment there. They're confident that that student has mastered that skill level.
So there are many assessments built into the program.
Okay.
But they don't take whole class assessments. So I may be working on something in the platform and then there's a mini, there's an assessment at the end of that. And if I haven't, if I haven't mastered it, then yes, it will send me back or it'll flag. But I, the teacher has to make sure that I'm monitoring that so that the students just don't keep progressing. Cause you know, if you're not watching me, I may just go on to the next one. The program should innately take you back.
Right, it doesn't do that. It doesn't, it doesn't shut it down for them to continue to the next level.
I don't wanna say it shuts it down. It will flag that it has not been mastered.
Hmm, that's interesting. Okay, cause I know that there are other programs where you're not able unless the teacher. Physically clicks on it and says you're ready to move on to the next one, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're really, they must master before moving on, but. It is also up to the teacher to make sure, what does that mastery look like? You understand what I'm saying? Like I said, when I looked at Friendly's data, I noticed that a lot of, there was in this class. There are a lot of students that have progressed through with minimal level of mastery. So that proficiency level is the piece that we have to look at. Yeah, I'm proficient, but how proficient? So I may just know this much of it and was able to go on, but when I sit on a real assessment. Benchmarks, common assessment, MCAT, I may not have mastered it to the level that I need to for that, if that makes sense. So I'm able to move on based on my little bit of minimal understanding, but it doesn't mean that I've mastered it to the level that I need to master. For a common assessment, so to speak.
And then the teachers are being mentored, right? They're being coached by. The, the Carnegie, is it Carnegie that we're using with?
We have Carnegie Learning Coaches, yes.
Okay, so they're being coached once. So there seems to be that there's a, there's a gap. There's something that's missing between the coaching and the teachers and the assessments. I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm curious to see when we finish the year, where our data points lie.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if you heard when I shared that we just met with the Carnegie team last week to look at some ways. To better, to get our teachers to be more intentional about their monitoring and going back and assigning. Oh, hey, Stephanie didn't do such and such. I see that she mastered it, but it's only minimal level mastery. Can we reassign this to her? So that was one of the meetings we just had last week with the Carnegie Learning Team. So we're going to re, kind of revamp some things with respect to coaching. And then we have some meetings planned for the teacher leaders in the building so that they can help support that as well.
Yeah, thank you. I missed that. Thank you so much.
No worries.
I would say this as a. When I, I just wanted to say about Carnegie, when we think about a partner. Well, I just wanted to say about Carnegie, when we think about a partner, they've been great in really working with my team and accommodating. Um, and my team goes to them for a lot of things. They're like, the data that we receive, we don't like how it looks. We need you to adjust it. I need weekly feedback from you. I need, and they have been very accommodating.